I'd like to call this meeting of the Willits City Council for September 11th, 2019, to order. And please join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call there, Delores.
Councilmember Farming? Present. Gabrius? Present. Strong?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Here. My name doesn't sound similar, so no one ever can do that. Okay, public communication, item two. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard, to expedite matters, and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. However, no action shall be taken. Another reminder is that that microphone over there at the podium is so that TV Land can hear you. It actually doesn't amplify your voice. And I kind of want to take a time, because I know that there's probably not a lot of people waiting to speak on a lot of things today, but there are some folks that are probably going to speak, that when it says that if it's not on the posted agenda, that basically means if we were going to discuss it, you'd got an opportunity during that item to talk about whatever you want to talk about. But if you wanted to come in and complain about a pothole at the other end of town that's not on the agenda, this would be the time to jump on that one. So I kind of try to tell people that's when to come up and say it, then if the situation where we could bring it back at a later date and discuss it. Also, the phrase that no action shall be taken is if it's not on the agenda, legally we can't take any action on it. So it's not agendized. We can listen to you during public communication, but we're not going to take action. Some people go away mad because they say, "They didn't do anything." No, it's just that we can't do anything at that point. So I just wanted to kind of do that. And so under public matters, item three, we have nothing. Actually, no. Is there anybody that would like to speak from the public here? I was ranting and want to make sure, is there anybody from the public that will speak on something not on the agenda? Hearing crickets?
Yeah, ma'am.
Oh, come on up.
A little unusual, but I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Daniel Curtis, and I am now the new chief plant wastewater operator at the wastewater plant. Just figured I'd introduce myself to you all.
All right, welcome.
I'd like to thank Stephanie for the opportunity and Scott Herman for the opportunity they've given me, and I'm sure you'll do the best job I possibly can.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I got.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, unless there's somebody else, we'll move on. I see no items on public matters, no enactment of ordinances. Under the consent calendar, we have minutes, but I'm hearing that we're pulling them?
Yes.
Okay, so we have nothing there. So now we're information reports. That'll be in our packets, and you could read about it online, basically business inspection activity and business license activity. Item seven, right to appeal. Persons who are dissatisfied with decisions of the city council may have the right to a review of that decision by a court. The city has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. Did I skip something?
We'd actually, Jim and I have been talking about this particular section. It turns out we had a citizen come to City Hall and ask for a form to appeal. And we were kind of scratching our heads on that, because there are no such forms to appeal. And no one's ever asked us for a form for an appeal before. So Jim and I started talking about it, and we realized that the actual text of this is simply, so we look at section 1094.6, which is a mechanism where people can appeal actions of the council, but it is not to here. It is actually through the state court system. And so it really, using that mechanism, you would not come here to appeal. We really have only one thing that can be appealed, and those are land use, particular land use decisions that are made by staff and that can then be appealed to the city council. When someone makes that sort of decision, when we make a staff decision on a land use issue, they are told how to appeal that to the council.
Another example is a water rate. If a customer disputes the water rate that there been, that staff has imposed upon them, they can appeal that or seek relief from the city council if they think it was owner or not justified, or the wrong rate was applied. But as far as reviewing action taken by the city council, it's not really even an appeal. It's a writ proceeding with a superior court. So the heading of an appeal is kind of a misnomer. So Stephanie brought this to my attention, that there's some confusion in the public about this quote.
Should it be phrased maybe, challenge to?
Well, we were, so I looked at several other cities, like half a dozen, half a dozen other cities in our region, and none of them have a provision like this. We have, since I've been around 16 years here, this has always been here, probably well before that, but there is no legal requirement that we have a section that's read every meeting. It's superfluous, and it's, there's no legal requirement that you need to read this every single meeting.
But would we still want to maybe put it on the website or out there so that?
It's not a bad idea.
So that the public, they decided they wanted to go through the effort to judicially challenge one of our decisions that?
I think that's the way most cities do it, because the writ proceeding does have a short timeline. It's a 90-day timeline to do an administrative writ. But it doesn't come to us, it comes directly to the court. And when a court gets a notice of an appeal of any sort of decision that is made, we get then a notice to the court to prepare a record. And that's when we sort of begin action, is all we do is we prepare a record, and then the court makes a decision on the actual case, based on the record, the written record of the proceeding.
So you're recommending we pull this from our agenda, not have this on air?
I think, it is my recommendation, because I think it causes some confusion, and it's really an unnecessary three or four minutes of reading.
Just out of curiosity, though, what then recourse does the public have if they're unhappy with decisions that the council has made? If it's not an agendized, itemized point that we will, you know, consider right to appeal, how do we let the public know that they do have a voice to call the council on decisions they not have?
Well, they would probably consult an attorney who would advise them about filing a writ with a superior court and let them know about that timeframe. And we could put such a notice on our website, but there is no requirement that we legally, every single meeting, read this out loud and recite the timeframe of a writ proceeding.
Gotcha.
Would we, what assurance would the council have that, let's say, somebody's come before us in regards to a water bill, that it would make its way on the agenda and it wouldn't just be a management decision? Would we still follow the same protocol? It would still come before the council if we choose to remove this item?
The one time that a water bill is challenged, that gentleman actually came here and said, "Hey, I want to appeal this, what do I do?" And we put it on the agenda, and he can't.
It's in our water code.
It's in our water code.
That's a different point of law is what you're doing.
Right. Our municipal code has a water chapter, and the water chapter discusses this recourse if you're upset.
So this is more in line with, we pass an ordinance that says, "No more kittens are allowed in Willits." Somebody says, "Hey, I don't like that idea, we want to challenge that," then they would have to go through this procedure and take this to court, in essence, to get us to reverse our agenda.
Right. The point is, we don't have to have this texted all of our agendas and have the mayor read this warning every meeting.
I think it's important to make the distinction between a decision that's made at the staff level, those are appealable, potentially appealable to the council. Not all of them, I think, but certain ones are.
Certain land use decisions, and those, there's a total appeals process, that they are notified of when they make that application.
When decisions of the city council itself, really, there isn't another body to hear that except the courts.
That's right.
Could we just, in the interest of transparency, instead of it being an item number that we go through, that maybe we just have it as a footer at the bottom of our agendas, and they're always there?
Yes.
So we have it there and on the website, and there, somebody, it's not like we hit it, it's?
We notify people that they have that right, it's just not an item on the agenda waiting for people to put it, because that will never happen.
So we could just put it as a footer?
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
And then do it that way, and that way it's there. Because I think we strive up here to make sure that we're as transparent as we can be, so.
Could I, I like your idea. Can we make sure that it doesn't get into tiny print and that the right to appeal is still bold on the back, so that they can easily find it, just so that there's a full understanding that there is a right to appeal? Okay.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, we just take the same font that we have there and just put it very bottom.
Yeah, we'll just drop it at the bottom.
It's a three-page agenda, it'll be on page three. If it's a two-page, it's on page two. Okay.
Great.
Well, that was a good dialogue. All right, so item seven, commissions, agencies, and authorities. Notice, the Willits City Council meets concurrently as the Willits Planning Commission and the City of Willits Successor Agency. So I guess we're here as the planning commission. For notice of public hearing, discussion, possible action on application for minor subdivision, number MLD 19-01 for Eric Maitland.
Yes.
I guess, Michelle?
So the city council is now convening as the planning commission?
We are?
Yes.
Yep.
Exactly.
Good evening. It's gonna be one second, because I do have a PowerPoint for you. And has everybody received the revised plan? So I went ahead and made it a little bigger. You have this in your packets. It's just an effort for clarity, because it's easier to read when it's bigger, and it didn't quite show up on the PowerPoint as well as I do.
I don't know how to turn that on.
What was that?
I don't know how to turn it on.
I do, I got it.
All right.
I have a PowerPoint over there.
All right. And folks, just so, for those of you, including TV Land, that some cities have a separate planning commission, and then you appeal those issues to the city council. In this case, we serve as the planning commission also.
And isn't that theoretically at least, appealable to the city council?
No, it's not, actually. Because we sit at the same body, there's actually a body of law that says, you don't have to do that.
So it's just the same. Okay. I didn't know that.
You're like arguing with yourself.
I know, it doesn't make logical sense. I just wonder, the law doesn't always.
It's a roll code.
This will take a while.
Uh-oh. Updates. Oh, no.
Your project starts several times.
Oh, it will?
That's what it says.
Yeah, somebody hasn't plugged it in and let it do its thing.
We haven't used this, I guess, for a couple of weeks. And our internet connection is not that strong here, so.
I have it in the USB as well.
I know, but it's got to get past this to get to the PC.
And that could be a while.
It could be real quick, or it could be.
Can you just start?
I'm wondering if you could just go through the computer and use your USB, yeah?
Well, it's got to get past this point.
Does it?
Yeah. I just, mine just did this little endeavor and took at least a half hour turning on and off. So maybe we could just?
Oh, that's so unfortunate.
While it's doing its thing, you can.
Okay. All right. More advice.
We have some diagrams down here that if anybody from the public would like to look at.
Okay. Well, good evening, Commission Chair, Michelle Johnson, Assistant City Planner. So tonight's project is a minor subdivision. The applicant is Eric Maitland at 310 Sequoia Boulevard. His request is to subdivide one parcel that is currently approximately 2.17 acres into two individual parcels. Might be a little, it's going to take me a second, because I had all this on my PowerPoint, so I didn't memorize every number. So the request is to subdivide one 2.17 acre parcel into two individual parcels, 1.48 acres and 1.67 acres. The project is consistent with our zoning and our general plan. The project is, the zoning district is residential estates, which has a minimum development requirement of 20,000 square feet. The proposed parcel exceeds that. The general plan designation is residential suburban. Again, it's the intent behind having residential suburban is to have larger parcels and in an area that can have larger homes. The staff has deemed the project environmentally exempt based upon sequel guideline sections 15315 minor land divisions and section 15332 infill development. The project, after we noticed the project, the project went through the TAC Commission, which is the Technical Advisory Committee, was reviewed by all the internal agencies, building, engineering, public works, water and sewer. The project was also referred to outside agencies that include California Fish and Wildlife, Air Quality Management, the local tribes, which is consistent with what we do with any projects that we take in. We received comments from California Fish and Wildlife regarding the creek and recommendations for a setback, of which, after receiving the comments, the applicant has chosen to go ahead and make modifications to the plans to take into consideration the comments from Fish and Wildlife. And the plan that you have in front of you identifies a building envelope, which will include the 25-foot setback and the setbacks that are required for the residential estates zoning designation. It's kind of small, but what that does is it limits whatever potential development for that parcel to be limited within that area. After, part of our process is we notice the project 10 days before the project. We also include in that noticing is a 300-square-foot area from the parcel, of which we noticed the neighbors. After the neighbors received the project description or the proposed project, we received some comments. We went out to the site, both the community development director and I, the Scott Herman from Water and Sewer and Engineering, to look at the site and to take into consideration some of the concerns, potential concerns for the project, which ultimately were potential for flooding, not necessarily on, below the parcel, but down the ways of the creek, which is, hopefully if I talk slow, we'll be able to show you one. This project is unique in the fact that it's actually a private road. So when you drive up Sequoia, it's actually owned by the property owners on, at the bottom of the lot on the corner. They own that. The road is actually a parcel. There's three parcels that are, appear to be a road, that are actually parcels, that only one of them has easements, which is our applicant, Eric Maitland. As we went and talked to the neighbors, what, the conversation included as to what the potential runoff would be, how would that increase the flow, and where the flow would be increased. So it's actually about 100 feet heading east. There's an existing culvert, and don't quote me on the diameter of the pipes, because that's not my area of expertise, but I believe it's 12 inches round. And the amount of water has, based upon years of upgrading the infrastructure upstream, there has gone larger without the 12-inch pipe getting bigger, which has created a faster flow to this area, which has increased the concern for potential flooding. We spoke to the property owner, which I'll be able to show you. I'll let my PowerPoint just up, and I don't have to wing it. If you can give me just one second, because I believe this will better help us understand what I'm speaking to. There we go.
Use the, yeah, so you're periodic. It's a great PowerPoint, it's worth the wait.
Thanks, Tessie.
Do you have a keyboard?
Yeah. So is this a keyboard issue now? Because the keyboard was working earlier.
Is the mouse on?
So the mouse is working.
Okay.
Am I too far away? There we go.
Perfect.
It's just sleepy today.
Don't tell me it's going to take you through.
I know, really?
Oh, my goodness.
Folks, you wanted entertainment? You thought it was going to be a short meeting?
This is a test. Okay, so moving forward. So this might actually be a good time. I do have some members of the public here that live in the neighborhood. They had spoke to us earlier regarding the project. I don't know if you prefer to wait, but they might be able to explain some concerns about the project.
Sure, and would you be able to say whether or not you've mitigated or could mitigate, or the?
So this, because this project was deemed CADDx, we did not, we are not mitigating anything. The staff came to the determination that they did not believe that there would be any significant increased environmental effects of the project. And so the project was deemed exempt based upon the two sections that I referred to. What the applicant has done.
And it is exempt from what?
CEWA, the California Environmental Quality Act. The applicant, based upon the comments, which is, whenever we receive comments after we route a project, we give them to the applicant, so the applicant can determine how they want to move forward with the project. And based upon the comments received from Fish and Wildlife, the applicant chose to go ahead and implement a building envelope on the parcel to meet, to satisfy the concerns of Fish and Wildlife, which is a 25-foot setback, which is consistent with what we've done with other minor subdivisions within the city of Willits, which is 25.
So I guess at this point, we've opened up the public hearing, and so members of the public that would like to speak about this project should come up, state your name. I mean, oh, no. Did you want to?
The project applicant there, Mr. Maitland. Is she that ready? That doesn't work. It's just for TV.
You weren't listening to me, Michelle.
Okay. My name is Eric Maitland. I'm the owner of a property. What I'm trying to do is go ahead and divide off a half an acre for my future son-in-law and my daughter to go ahead and build a house on. And so it's not a spec home, it's not anything like that. It's just a building envelope for them to live in. What we're also going to be doing when we build this is because everything, there is no way to divert any kind of water off of there. Everything is going to go to the creek, like it currently is doing. Now, when you obviously put a building envelope in there, you can increase by a minor amount, but we've actually, the way we're going to be diverting the water, it would actually not make any difference. We probably won't have any impact, anything, maybe even help the water flow. So what we're trying to do is keep everybody's setbacks correct, abide by any of the rules that Fish and Games go ahead and put in place. And that's pretty much it. It's a end-of-the-road type place, so it's not really an impact on too many people. One people, set of families that we felt like could be impacted, we actually physically went over and seen them, and that's Warren Kathleen Lewis, who owned the corner lot, which we would be building, I won't say next to them, but as close as you can be to them, because there's a distance in between houses. And we've already had a good long discussion with them, and very actually supportive. So, in a nutshell, that's kind of what we're doing.
What is it that you're doing that'll help keep the water flow from being, you said you're going to be doing something as you construct this that will help?
Well, what we, originally what I was going to do, because there's a lot of water that comes off that hill, and it all goes directly to that drainage. And so what we're going to try to do is see if we can't put a French drain in at the top where retaining wall will be, and try to divert that to where it'll go to the back part of the lot. And so it'll be a little bit easier to have it dispersed down. Because what you don't want us to do is hit the creek.
At high velocity.
Really, right. So, and there's.
Spread.
Yeah, we're planning on doing that in a couple of different places. And, but, I mean, it's going to be the same amount of water that's been there before. It's not anything different in that sense.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions of the applicant?
Yeah.
I do have one question, and maybe, Michelle, since you mentioned that not his project, but that there have been other things upstream, what are those? Is it just some of the houses that have been built farther up the hill that have?
It would be up, it would be down.
It would be, so there's a whole story to how the build-out of this particular area, which is all played into where we are. Essentially, this is not, potentially not the issue of this project, it's an issue, it's an existing issue of how everything was built out and how things have unfolded over the last 50 years. And we have some of the neighbors here that can speak more accurately to that than I could. But essentially, it's based upon things that initially, it was, it's a privately-owned road. This is private property. These weren't city projects, so they weren't city planned, and not that the city always, you know, not that the city's always the answer, but at least we don't have a paper trail in a way that we can explain how this unfolded. But ultimately, here we are. And so the question came to staff as to, is this, is this a product of this project, or is this an existing issue? And then, essentially, the question is for the planning commission as to what, how to move forward with the project. Does that answer your question?
Okay.
If one of the neighbors isn't able to answer or explain more accurately, I can try to read this.
All right, maybe we'll just open it up to anybody else that wants to.
Well, I was just going to, Tyler, too, did you want to, would you like me to take back, move forward in PowerPoint, or did you want to go ahead and continue with the public comment?
You know what, have you take over the project?
Okay.
Or take over the speaking.
You got it. We can do that. I apologize for the.
Skip over the things we already knew.
I apologize for the inconvenience. Okay, so this is a Google image I put together, based upon the public comment that we've received over the last couple of days. So essentially, this is where the proposed project is. This is the existing parcel that is being, the applicant's requesting to subdivide just less than a half an acre right here. There is a seasonal creek. Mind you, this is something that I put together, a guesstimate. It's not something that was done based upon, Google didn't identify this, and I just want that to be stated. But essentially, there's a seasonal creek that runs through this area right here. And the concern is that when we put a house here, the water that used to be absorbed into the ground is now either being diverted to the road and running down the road at a faster pace and hitting the creek, instead of slowly being absorbed and then entering the creek. And what the impact is going to have, you can't see, there's actually a house down here in this area, and you can't, this is where, actually, let me move forward to my next slide, which will, shows it a little bit better. Oh, comment? Oh, we're going backwards. Okay, so at the bottom of that creek, this is where the concern is. So we have this dammed area that has a 12-inch or so pipe that collects the water that comes down from the hill, that comes under Sequoia, that follows this natural drainage, and there's a little dammed area here, which, based upon having conversations with the neighbors, as of today, has never flooded. It's gotten very high. There's a There's a emergency drainage right here, an overflow, which we can see over here, comes out right here. Is this, is that a different picture? Is that correct?
I'm just surprised that there's a dammed area.
Oh.
Well, where, the picture that you're showing is a different area than what I think we were thinking.
That you thought were.
That goes rather than the Sequoia bowl, or, that's actually an 18-inch culvert. So this might be a different drainage, a different subsidiary that might be coming in further down.
That's the backside of Galen's house in between.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense now. Yeah. So that's, that's.
This was the area that was brought to our attention based upon the concerns for, for drainage. And again, moving back, this is where the proposed project is. That drainage area is, is down a ways, down here. And then gets diverted underneath the garage, out over onto Redwood Avenue. And I have a picture. So this is the overflow. This is where it comes out after it goes underneath a house, and then floods, or not floods, flows, is the word I was looking for, into this area right here, which this was within, my understanding, the last year or so was upgraded by the, by the city of Willets. And in, based upon, we had, we spoke with the neighbors around this area. We spoke with the neighbor across the street. And, and even, he had said that it gets really high, but he's never, he hasn't seen it actually, at this point, overflow. And based upon the conversation, that this was a concern based upon, because they didn't know what the potential for the new runoff would be, and if that could be that, be what ultimately put it over, what ultimately created flooding. And so this was their opportunity to bring it to light. Let me go back just a little bit. So prior to that, when staff was conducting their research for the project, we identified two key issues. The two, the first key issue was based upon consistency with the zoning and the general plan, of which staff found was consistent. The only concern, which is a standard condition that we apply to all potential building projects, is the fact that you can't start, we don't want you coming into the neighborhood and waking everybody up at 6 o'clock with hammers and waking the neighbors up. So we add a standard condition of approval that says that, you know, no work is going to be started before a certain time, and takes into consideration the weekends. The second issue, or this, was the potential for the creek as to how we can make sure that the creek setback was maintained. And based upon discussion, the applicant had created a plan, revised his tentative map to include a building envelope, and we just wanted to ensure that that was, that the project was developed that way, and we added a condition of approval, which is addressed. And key issue number two. This is just a better picture of me trying to explain without a visual of the parcel. So this is the Lewis', the Lewis's own, these parcels right here. These are actual individual parcels. And they are also owned by the Lewis's. There is a private easement into Eric Metlin's property right here. And this is the entirety of his property. This is actually where it's going to be, be subdivided. I just wanted to bring that to clarity in case there's any questions. Some of the, based upon some of the comments from the, the neighbors, they brought up, you know, what about curb and cutter? How could some of these different, what are some alternatives? What are some solutions that could be applied to this project that could, could help eliminate the potential for flooding? And, and staff took in those considerations, and I believe everybody that I received comment from is here. So I would, unless they're opposed to coming up and speaking to it, I'll let them address those, what their suggestions were, their concerns.
Would you like to leave the map up? Folks that are going to speak, would, do you want use of the map?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for staff?
Are there any other lots that are, I guess these? This is the applicant's home. Are there any other lots down here that are served by Sequoia?
So those are, those are above. So this is, so this is a pretty steep hill heading to the top of Sequoia. For one second. Mr. Metlin's house is right here, and this, there is several, there are. And I can, I can show you a different map if you'd like to see it. Actually, if you open up your packet, if you go to the maps, there's one of this that says adjacent parcels. And the adjacent parcels, it identifies all the surrounding neighbors. So there is approximately three houses that.
That would be down here, or up here, right?
Yeah.
Up the hill, but south.
Yes, correct. However, I, I don't believe, I, I did not receive any email, or I didn't, voicemails or any comment from any of the parcel owners that were to the south of the proposed project.
Like, there's no questions from Michelle at this point? Then maybe we'll open it up now to public comment. Members of the public that would like to come up and speak? And please state your name.
I will indeed. I'm Kathleen Lewis. This is my husband Warren, right here. We live just north of the Metlins. And we're the ones who unfortunately own the street, which has a lot of difficulties, as far as we're concerned. But we're not here to address that. We just are here to address the fact that we're very much in favor of this lot split, and we would love to see it go through. We, the Metlins are great people, they're our neighbors, and we love being neighborly. And we received a lot split 13 years ago to be able to build our house where we are now. So anyhow, we're very much in favor of it. And I don't know, does anybody have any questions of us? Nope? Okay, that's all that I have for. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I'm pretty good today.
Thank you.
Okay, next?
I'm Wando Wilson, I live at 499 Redwood Avenue. We get a lot of drainage down from, I don't know what that's actually showing there, that blue line, we came in late, but.
Supposedly the waterfall or the, or the seasonal creek.
The winter creek. I can pull up your property.
Where's it starting?
We got, we got pictures of your property as well. Your house?
Yes.
All right.
I was up at Eric's house today, and we talked about how he could maybe somehow, I don't know, not even know how big the house is going to be. I don't know that yet.
Somewhere around 19,000 to 2,000.
So that's, that's going to be range that won't soak into the ground, that 2,000-square-foot house. And right now, I have a ditch on both sides of my house there. Right where the culvert comes down to the street. See where that red park is? That's a ditch that comes down my house. That's where that water comes from.
Here's a better picture.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that ditch there goes alongside of my house and Mr. Ed Schuman's house. In the wintertime, that, that flows so much, it is about that far from going over that board, when that water comes down. And I'm just, want to make sure that there's no more water coming down. Because in a heavy rains, if that backs up at all, it goes into his house. It goes under, it goes under the house next door to him, and goes right beside him, beside his back door. And I, we spent about $10,000 on, on that ditch there. When we first came there, it was all dirt. And the water would come down, and it would soak in the house, and the, the water would seep up into the garage and the cracks of the floor. And we put that ditch in, and no longer, we couldn't even open the door hardly. So we put that ditch in there, and then on the other side, there's more water that comes in. I don't know if it's coming from the same place or not. But it all comes from that big culvert. There's another ditch on the other side of the house. And I, and I looked down here where it says the city's going to provide water and sewer to this, to the house. Do you have water and sewer there now, Eric?
What's that?
Do you have, you have water and sewer from your house now, Eric?
Yes.
How does the sewer get to Redwood Avenue?
The water and sewer get up?
How does the sewer get down to, up the hill?
There's a sewer line.
I got an answer, if you want.
Warren, actually?
In the, in 1989, we had an issue with the city and the sewer. Board of Lobe and Remus would be. Bill Van Norton told us that that was all lateral sewer, no sewer. And they were worried about old sewer going underneath the house to the east of us. So Gordon said, "I'll take care of that problem." He did. He put a sewer up.
There's a sewer line.
Run right up all of that.
Down Sequoia?
It goes down Sequoia and then up to your house? But when it comes down, does it flow down up?
It goes on to, into the, there's a manhole right at the corner of Sequoia and Redwood.
So it's real deep, goes right into that?
So, again, sewer is different than storm drain?
Right. I just want to make sure there's not any more water than, we talked today about how it may be able to alleviate some of the water and have it soaking into the, to the ground itself, which was good. But you can't take more water down there.
Let me ask you a question, since you're, you're up here right now. Are you satisfied that you could work with Eric as to what he might mitigate? I mean, you met with him, so.
That's right.
Do you think that what he's proposing, you think?
You have to see what is, what, you know, how was, yeah, I think so, yes.
Okay.
We don't need no more water down there.
I get it. Anybody else that would like to speak? Mr. Schuman? Step forward and.
Hi, my name's Ed Schuman. I'm Wando, I know a lot of you. Wando's neighbor of that map. With a ditch right there. I'm at the White House.
Yep, there you go.
The other one is kind of cluttered. I just found out about the subdivision a few days ago. Councilman Stretts, he was kind enough to share his paperwork on it. I didn't really go through it carefully, but my, my main concern is that on the Metlin property, I think it's called a dry ditch, a dry creek bed. And when you look at the property, it doesn't even look like there's a creek there. But almost immediately, it goes to the culvert. And that's where the water starts really teeming. So in the wintertime, it's a torrent. And it storms, that ditch, a concrete ditch, goes behind my house, and it's a dirt ditch, which I have to maintain each year. And the water is very, very rapid in the heavy storms. So I'm concerned, one, about any added diversion, if there are any. I'm not sure there are. And any construction debris that might get down into that section that's right within a couple dozen feet of where the house was built. What happens to the creek, it's really a ditch. It's only about two or three feet wide and about three, four feet deep. And in the past, I have to be out there every storm to check it, because things go teeming down the hill. And anytime someone does construction work up the hill, scrap lumber and things block the ditch. When it's blocked, it turns between those two houses, my house and the Wilson house. And when it makes that turn, this construction debris, odds and ends, branches, plug there, and it backs it up. And it happens almost instantly. And when that does happen, the creek, I don't know how many thousands of gallons a minute or an hour go through it, but it rages. And it's at capacity right now in the wintertime. And it's been beyond capacity in heavy storms. And when there's debris in there, it plugs it up, and it backs it up, and it comes under my house, and runs out to the street. The ditch is barely big enough to accommodate in heavy storms. The city had, a couple of years ago, done the drainage on the street, which really helped it. And that's been a blessing for everyone. What I would like is the city planning people, or someone on the council, to appoint someone to walk behind these houses. There's only five or six houses that go up the hill to Sequoia. And take a look at the drainage and see what it looks like. So I'm concerned about that. The drainage, yes?
Have you talked to Mr. Metlin about his plans to do any of the French drain or any of that, which might mitigate some of the water?
I just found out about this one day. So I didn't know about it. I think it was Saturday. No, I haven't talked to him, but I'm happy to talk to him. And I don't, I, when I looked at his parcel, I can't see where he could divert much water. There's not a whole lot, except that spot. So unless there's a lot of area that doesn't percolate the water, there's more runoff, or they're really cautious to not let junk and debris fall into that area, because it doesn't look like a creek. And it will flow down behind these houses, my house in particular, because that's where it makes the turn.
Anybody have questions, Mr. Schuman?
I have a question, Mr. Metlin.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Eric, it, so if I understand it, the water is running kind of northeast as it comes down the hill? Is that right?
Yeah, right behind you.
Is there a, would it be possible to run about the 2,000 square foot of whatever rainbow would normally absorb there? Is there a way to divert, and would there be impact? If that water, that, that amount of water was to go to the southeast portion of the property and come down, would, would that do anything?
Southeast is all uphill.
Well, it's all uphill.
It's all uphill? There's any kind of way that it forms the other ground?
It's coming down there right now. The only difference is, if we were to build there, is that obviously, when you build a house, you have that particular area that doesn't absorb the water, but there is all the other area that can. So what we were thinking about during Wando's line, talked about it today, is right underneath where the driveway would go in, you have your normal-sized culvert, because right now, there's probably an eight-inch culvert up above it. And then just continue that down. And then have it spread out into probably a five- or six-foot-wide ditch that should fill with rock, and let, so it hits there, so it can't fasten and go down and hit there. So that way, it kind of more dispersed, and be able to go ahead and drain off. But outside of that, no matter what we do, regardless of whether or not you build there or not, the same water is going to get there. It's just a matter of how fast.
How fast it goes? So could we hear, is there anybody from engineering that could address, like if they put that, that ditch with the rock bed in there, how, how much that would slow down the?
I mean, I definitely think.
Can you come up?
Yeah.
Suzanne Lucis, Assistant Engineer for the city. I definitely think there's room for solutions to the footprint, to the building, and the decrease in the infiltration. A good set of engineering plans, I think, would help, because that's what people do. But it's likely that you would want, you know, like some type of pond or place to hold that extra water, and then rock to, maybe not necessarily in the pond, but going down somewhere, like some type of a rocks well or something. It's pretty calm and it's slow.
Have you been up to see the law?
I have not.
Yeah, there's no place, or pond, besides if you were to put it right before Warren put in the culvert. But that would not be a good idea, just for the simple fact that you're saturating that ground area. And it's something, you know.
Reckless line in.
Yeah.
But anyway. I think there's.
Can I just jump in in terms of sequencing? And I kind of want to bring in our, our building inspector, Ann Dusty, for just a question on sequencing of these permits. Right now, you are hearing a lot split, and, and just a subdivision. Further on down the road, you're going to be, they're going to be building permits and things like that. I'm, usually when you're doing construction, some conditions of approval for. I'm, usually when you're doing construction, some conditions of approval for construction projects would include silt fences and things like that to help exactly the kind of issues that you're dealing with. And I'm wondering if the runoff issue from the actual building is something that maybe is more appropriately dealt with at the building permit stage instead of the actual subdivision phase? While this is simply a lot split, and that's what I'm just going to throw out here, because this is very specific to the actual building, and we don't have, we have, he's still at the drawing board, he just wants to split his lot so he can go to those engineering stages, because he can't do engineering unless he can get the lot split. So that's sort of where we are. I don't want to put cart before the horse here.
It's a good clarification.
Thank you.
Pretty well finished. I'm just requesting that the city council either have the engineer staff or the planning staff walk between, behind these six houses and just look at the creek, see what really happens. Because it's misleading to look at Sequoia, you really can't tell, it looks like nothing's happening there. But as soon as you walk down behind these houses to where the drainage comes, into Redwood Avenue, it really changes dramatically. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Schuman.
I can tell you, I live on North Street a few blocks down, and water just gushes down the hill during the winter every year. So that whole west side, I know just the water comes down.
It changes dramatically.
Mr. Schuman, can I have a question, Mr. Schuman?
No, I have a question of the whole place. Would you put up the thing with the, where the creek is supposed to be, please? Right here. This is really a misnomer here, because if I walk this whole thing, and this is Spruce, there is a creek bed, dry creek bed that runs right down here. And what I'm surprised at is that they put a culvert in here today across this into an outlet right here. And so the water needs to be, some of it needs to just come down that ditch that's already there. And that would really eliminate quite a bit of it, because it would be going two ways. And then that would help it out. And generally, it just seems obvious to me, but, you know, I'm not an engineer. Yes, Warren?
There is a, coming on the right side of Charlie's place there, you can see that little open area, oh, I guess by Gannon Towns. There's an easement that goes straight down from the top of the hill down that way. And that water, some of that water was that way when it ran on the other side of there.
Right. But the thing about it is that it's dry here, and I don't know why they made this curve when it could have just curved and then some of it had gone down straight, so that would have split the stream.
Andrea, why don't you come up?
I just wanted to clarify, the pipe that was installed today is a lateral to the vacant lot. It's a sewer lateral.
Okay.
Thank you.
But there is a lot of water that comes down that ditch.
And it, and it, there's a ditch there.
Yeah. And we're making some improvements to the road there to let the water flow.
Good evening, Council Dusty Dooley, Community Development Director. So what, unfortunately, by the time we wrote the staff report, we weren't aware of the historical drainage issues in this area. And so I appreciate the neighbors bringing this matter to our attention. This is a classic example of bad planning, okay? Because essentially what's happened over the last 60 years is we allowed homes to go in. There used to be a seasonal creek that was daylighted. We allowed people to put fill within the creek, build on top of it, develop their, you know, their own drainage systems to protect their land. But it doesn't appear, and someone will correct me if I'm wrong, that there was a holistic plan of, "I'm going to do this on my property and I'm paying attention to how this is going to affect the next property X." So it's sort of this hodgepodge of drainage improvement that's happened over time that's...
All on private property?
All on private property. You know, typically what a jurisdiction will do is they'll identify drainages, those will become easements, you don't get to build in them. You identify who maintains them, who has access to them and whatnot. When we found out in the last week of potential drainage issues in this area, staff went and walked behind all these homes and tried to follow the drainage patterns.
So you've done what Mr. Schuman has asked?
Correct, yeah. And, you know, it appears that at times people would then, you know, replace a smaller culvert with a larger culvert, so then you have water moving faster to the next culvert, so that would cause issues for other neighbors. So, you know, anyways, you know, and obviously we have some folks that have spent, I'm going to say some significant money upgrading some of the drainage improvements on their property, so understandably they get concerned when there's new development being proposed, in this case a subdivision that could lead to some new homes, that they're concerned that that investment they made is no longer going to be adequate and they're going to be impacted. This subdivision has a building envelope tied to it, so there is some limit on development there. It has quite a bit of open space, open land, you know, beyond that, you know, so it does meet our criteria for the buildup in the lot. But what might be the case is that the drainage system just really can't take another drop. And in that case, what you start looking at is like low-impact development type features on this property. So, you know, you've got a 2,000-square-foot house, you offset that with a 10-by-10-foot rain garden, okay? So if the council wants, and it's, you know, the owner agreed to it, rather than trying to design something tonight, we could just simply say, you know, you'll incorporate some low-impact development into your, you know, pre-construction plans, the plans that our city manager was referencing, to offset that increased runoff from whatever development you have. That could be rain garden, that could be, instead of using impervious surfaces for your driveway, you use gravel or you use, you know, some type of bricks. There's all kinds of ideas out there. But that would be my suggestion to ensure that this project and any future development isn't going to increase the load that's going into that drainage system.
Dusty, can I ask you another question, because it was brought to light that we said, "No, you can't subdivide." Eric could still build a granny unit there, right?
He could actually completely build out that parcel next to him. And so in a sense, by approving the subdivision in the building envelope, we've actually limited the development area on his land that otherwise could be developed today. So if you look at it from that standpoint, the subdivision actually decreases the development potential.
And folks, that's another example of the state coming in to fix the housing issue, but what they do is they take that local control away. And so in this case here, the owner would, I guess, be fixing a potential problem for us that hypothetically he wouldn't have to do if he followed the state rules. So. Is that correct, Dusty?
Yeah.
Matt, did you want to?
There was another public comment.
Do you want to? Why don't you come on up? Judge, if you could please state your name for the record?
I'm Galen Hathaway. I'm one of the owners of, along the blue line there. As I recall, I, I worked and remodeled that house. Our building inspector used to live in the house that I own. And as I recall, Warren, the culvert under Sequoia Avenue used to be 12 inches.
It crushed. It crushed when we put the sewer in.
And so Warren, and this was developed by Warren's wife. Father developed this property. Actually, he signed the subdivision for the first part of it. So when, on Sequoia Avenue, when the 12-inch culvert was under Sequoia, it blocked the water and there was a little dam there. So if it really rained, it slowed the water down.
No.
It's a dam?
No, it wasn't a dam, but there was water, we back up there sometimes. I've seen a pond of water there. And so when we, we put a culvert under my garage, and that's where the little concrete wall is on my property. And the building inspector measured Warren and his wife's culvert, and I, as I recall, it's 12 inches. And so he and the general engineering contractor, and the city, he was the city building inspector at that time, agreed that a 15-inch pipe under my garage would be sufficient. And then Warren could put a bigger pipe in. Is it 24 under Sequoia now?
I don't know.
18. Huh? 18. Okay. And so that made the flow greater from Warren's property down under Sequoia to these properties. It increased the possibility of flow. And also it reached a point at my property where we have a 15, an 18-inch culvert going in to eventually a 15. Then my neighbors, then they put a pipe, I think it's an 18, under their house to divert the water underneath their house, and they built a building in addition to their house. So part of that drainage goes under their house, and then it goes to Mr. Schuman's house, and it reaches a flume, sort of, built out of Redwood, I believe, a square box, actually.
It's covered between our houses?
No, no, yeah, not yours, your next-door neighbor's house. It used to be a wooden flume-like thing many years ago. I don't know what it is now. I don't. Anyway, so what I'm concerned about is what Mr. Schuman and his neighbor are concerned about increasing the flow. And my neighbor, John Klosnica, has put a culvert in that was larger than the old pipe there, so he's got like a 24-inch culvert. And so the possibility of the flow is great from Sequoia down to my place, because there's a big culvert now. And so the capacity for it to carry water and carry water faster is bigger. And that creates a possibility of flooding. But, and so I was hoping that Eric, and I'm glad that Eric lives in the neighborhood, I'm glad he's one of our neighbors, that I'm a long favor of him having a house there, but I don't want the flow increased. So I was talking about maybe putting curbs and gutters on Sequoia or something, so some of the water off the flow could be diverted down to the road. And that would end up in the same storm drain, the DI, that there are pictures out here you presented, where it goes by the man's garage.
Why don't you, Mr. Hathaway, why don't you let Eric come up and answer?
Who? I'll come up here with you. Doing a curb gutter sidewalk would actually speed up the flow of the water. And there's a swale right where the creek, the culvert, goes underneath Sequoia Boulevard. There's a swale. You could not physically get that to go out to Redwood Avenue unless you pumped it. Or you raise that whole thing, which at that point, Deb's garage would pretty much get flooded. So if you put curb gutter sidewalk there, you're just, you're speeding it up.
Faster.
That's why I was trying to do, that's why I was trying to dig out, put some river rock in there, try to slow it down a little bit. Because originally, and it's funny, I was talking to Wendell a little bit about this, is originally I was going to go ahead and put a culvert in, because right now it kind of meanders all over the place and kind of is tearing up the property. So I was just going to make it and shoot it right down into the drainage. I was talking to Wendell, he was going, "Oh, God." So that's, so now we've come to that, to where it'll actually make it a lot better. So, but if you were to try to curb it down there, good luck. There's about a foot and a half difference in height between Redwood Avenue and the swale, and I just don't know how you're going to get that without digging the garage.
So Eric, while you're up there, and I think it was brought to point that today we're not trying to design your project there, but that you feel you could work with city staff to, if this were approved today, you think that, you know, they obviously have some ideas as to what, and they've heard from the neighbors, and it sounds like, you think that you could abide with what the city says for the final design? And I'm assuming you're still designing this house, right?
Yeah, well, yes. Kyler has actually done a lot of the design work already. But you don't also want to get ahead of yourself. I don't want to sit there and, I've already got 18 grand into this thing already, and so I don't want to sit there and throw another 10 to 15 grand, and all of a sudden somebody says, "Well, we're going to do something a little different." That just kind of aggravates you a little.
So, Mr. Hathaway, do you feel that he answered your question?
No.
Okay.
Well, at least for us.
All right. Okay.
A curb could, a curb and gutter could be constructed on the east side of Sequoia. I agree, it would be expensive, and you would have to bring in, I don't think it would flood the garage at all. The water would be going into, well, if somebody, an engineer told me, he goes out with survey instruments and checks it out.
Well, hey, I want to keep this moving on, and so I don't want to try and design this project tonight. So what I'd like to do is if somebody else wants to speak, and then I'd like to bring it back up here.
There's actually a gutter or a culvert on the east side of the road already.
Right.
But most of the water never gets there.
Mr. Lewis, do you want to speak?
I was going to say on the east.
Why don't you come on up?
He's loud in that.
I'm loud.
I know.
The reason for coming up is so that it can be recorded.
You can hear me back there. On the, I'm Warren Lewis, and the neighbor of Eric's. And on the east side, it'd take even more work. We're talking about the north side, right? There's, the way that road goes up, and where that culvert goes through, coming down this way, there's no way, there's so much water that pours off that mountain that, I mean, it just, it's like a waterfall. And nothing you're going to do in there is going to change that without, without changing the city buying the road, maybe.
Are people going to do that?
I've tried that before.
Some others we'd like to give you, so.
Well, we have it. But anyway, I like the idea of maybe putting some rock down in that little swale, because the city changed the drainage on Redwood up there several years ago and took a drain out and put one of those Vs in the road, and put a whole bunch of rock up Redwood, and it worked pretty well. It stopped the flooding on that side of the street. So there is potential to do that. And we wouldn't care if you put over rock in or pour in there.
There you go.
So that's it.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this?
Star was? I'm not sure, I'm not positive, but I think that star might be my house, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I think it was, Stransky said that there was a, the water comes on the back there where that open is there and goes out into the street down there, wherever is in the street. Spruce. Where Spruce is. That water also, it goes down there and comes out there on Spruce, also comes in the back of my, back of my house, and I got a ditch on the other side. It goes out into the, into the storm drain. When they redid the street, we put a pipe in there, the city's approved, the city did it, I paid for it, but put a pipe in there to drain the water on that side of my house into the storm drain. Is there any reason why that has to come down, the way that creek is there? If that's an easement going down to Spruce, I know you don't want to have tons of water coming out on Spruce either, but if you could do that easement and cut a, cut a big French drain in there to slow it down where it would not go gushing down through there?
So I have a question for Dusty regarding easement. This eas, so Dusty, while you get up here, that easement isn't something that we do, right? It's something that we, when there's development, we would ask the adjoining property owners to do, or is that a drainage easement that the city would actually come in and do?
Yeah, in this situation, I'm not aware that the city has any easement through there to do any type of drainage improvements. And in a situation like this, typically we would have a drainage easement And in a situation like this, typically we would have a drainage easement recorded on the property to be maintained by the property owner, right?
So it's not something we could magically make happen unless those folks do?
What if I just block off that water?
What's that?
What if I just block off those ditches where that water's flowing out of my property?
I, I think that it would spill over and Dusty, again, you could answer this, is when you divert water that's historically gone over your property, there's some responsibilities and legal ramifications, is that correct?
Yeah, right. First off, your neighbor probably would be upset with you and like come knock on your guards and you guys would have a discussion.
Right, exactly.
If you called the city, we'd say, that's a civil matter between you guys.
The same thing is gonna be happening if he builds his place and the water comes flowing in my house. Or Mr. Schuman's house. We're gonna be going after Eric.
Right, and that, that's part of why we established the building envelope, to keep a 25-foot buffer between any development that Eric proposes and the creek. To try to be a little bit smarter this time and not allow, at least not enhance the situation that has been going on for the last few years.
Technically, by building on the creek, do what some of these other folks have done in the past and build it down.
Eric wouldn't be allowed to go fill in the creek and put in a culvert or anything like that, no. That's highly not allowed.
Fish and game would be involved too.
Possibly so, yeah.
So, good.
So is it possible, we don't currently have an easement, there's no way for the city to go in and improve the drainage? Is that, is it possible to create that kind of a thing now? It doesn't happen historically, but moving forward, is there a way that the homeowners can get together so that they're all on the same page and not putting in these multiple different sizes and, and have plans, a good plan, but?
It's a little bit too late for the city to referee the situation.
Gotcha.
If this had been vacant land and was a proposed subdivision and all these homeowners were part of those lots, then we obviously would understand what the drainage pattern is. We would probably utilize the existing creek as the drainage. Call that an easement off limits from development and then, you know, and then, and then either identify, you know, I doubt that we'd get so far as, you know, require like a maintenance agreement between homeowners or something, but it's probably not unprecedented, sure. But, but again, if the concern is, is that this project's gonna increase the amount of water, the amount of runoff into the creek, which it will to some extent, I'd say, you know, not a lot, but again, what we're hearing is that, you know, the neighbors have been able to make some improvements and they think they've got to a point where as long as you don't add another drop of water, we're good. Well, we're gonna add another drop of water and so that's where we're talking about having some type of storm retention improvements, low-impact development within Mr. Metlin's property to offset that. And that's, that's, there's some very cheap, reasonable way that, I'm guessing, you're shaking your head so you're aware of what I'm talking about. You've completed some of those improvements in the past and you're pretty confident that we can come up with something.
Absolutely.
Right, and I am too.
And that's obviously within your purview, if we approve this project to hold them?
Well, it is, and again, you always have to have drainage plans and grading plans as part of any development project, but there's nothing on our books that says you have to retain storm water on your property. So if, if you want, we can add a condition to the subdivision. And provided Eric agrees to it, and it's not a mitigation measure, therefore we can maintain the categorical exemption document. The condition might read that the applicant incorporate low-impact development designs during the pre-development phase of any proposed construction to offset increased stormwater runoff from any development.
I'm just asking, is that more, is it appropriate to do it at this point? Or would it, wouldn't it be more appropriate when you actually have a site plan and building plans and those sorts of things?
But again, if, if there's nothing that requires him through those plans for their standards to incorporate low-impact to offset stormwater. But we would, that's when we would require that, but it's.
Yes, but you could require it at that time.
And that's what we're saying, and that's what the condition that I just read is saying.
As part of this approval or as part of this approval?
It would be a condition of the subdivision and those improvements would be identified on the improvement plans that the city manager is referencing.
If, if the planning commission approves the subdivision and the plans are done in such a way to not add one more drop of water and we all are comfortable with that and it doesn't work, what is the city's liability?
The city doesn't have liability for a discretionary approval. I believe, I believe the city would have, would be immune from liability for approving a subdivision that, that thereafter had an effect on a neighboring property owner. We had a similar situation about 10 years ago where someone made the contention that their property received excess water flow as a result of someone who put a garage or a slab on their, on an adjacent piece of property. And a claim was brought against the city for that. And we resisted that claim on the basis of governmental immunities that the city had for approving the, the improvement. So I don't think the city has liability. I think that the developing property owner could have liability to affected neighbors.
Madge has a question.
So I, I like the wording that you proposed and I think it is appropriate to put it on the approval of the lot split so that when a building permit application comes in, you have the authority to look at that issue and try to make sure they've done the best they can to reduce or to, to not exacerbate the flow to the, to the seasonal water rate. And it was also mentioned about construction, making sure that that, that no debris gets in there that then goes downhill and, and blocks any of the drainages and that are just barely doing their job. And is that something that's standard in building?
Yeah, when, when he submits his improvement plans with, it'll include best management practice to ensure we're, we don't have erosions or any other effects on water quality.
And especially during construction.
And that's, that's very standard.
So I'm just willing to move.
All right, let me just say one thing is that. And I think the reason we would add this at this point is that I think everybody in this room knows everybody and I think everybody has to some degree some level of trust with their fellow neighbor, et cetera. But, you know, 50 years from now Eric could sell the property or not be there anymore and you guys could sell. And the folks that occupy Wendell's property are gonna say, who allowed this to happen? And so having it go with the lot split would be important, so. I think I have Madge?
I will move approval with the, with the added condition that Dusty proposed.
One second, Madge.
Do I have any other discussion? Do you have any public comment? To approve the lot split, subdivision, sorry.
With the condition.
With the condition.
And can you spell out the condition just so we have it recorded?
What's that? He's gonna.
Dusty's gonna read it. So we have five minutes.
So the, the additional condition, if it's agreeable to the property owner, is to, applicant shall incorporate low-impact development designs during the pre-development phase of any proposed construction to offset increased storm water, stormwater runoff from any development. And the reason I'm again asking him is because by him incorporating that into his project, then it's not a mitigation measure and we can still rely on the categorical exemption that we're proposing.
And the, and the other, the other conditions are in the staff report, the staff recommendation.
Call for the vote, Doris.
Councilor Connie?
Yes.
Robert, yes?
Yes.
Yes, Stransky?
Yes. Yes, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We learned a lot.
No, no, and this is important because I'll tell you what, I have water running through my house or. And it's just one of those things, so. Whenever it rains, you're like.
Condition of living on the west side of the.
We get hole hole and during the winter it looks like someone's running a hose or shooting water.
Okay, folks, we're now going to. Yeah, reconvene as the city council and now we are at, city manager, city manager reports and recommendations.
Yes, I only have two things. One is to remind everybody about Coastal Cleanup Day. It's the 21st. It's on the 21st from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. We are going to be holding coastal cleanup. Come to City Hall. We'll have bags and gloves and things like that. We have, we will be dispersing people to sites as they come. We have a wonderful volunteer that's going to pick up bags and take it to the dump. And the sites that we know that we are going to hit are Brown's Corner and also Bechtel Creek behind the Burger King. We have permission from those property owners. And so those are the first two. If there are other sites, normally, unless we have permission from property owners, we hit publicly owned property only because we don't like people going onto private property without permission. Last year, we actually did, a couple of people went behind Mariposa Market. I have, we have not talked to Mariposa Market to see whether they want to do that again and open their gates and let people go down there, but I'll probably drop by there and see. So that's our first one. And second thing is.
What was it called again?
Coastal Cleanup Day.
Coastal Cleanup.
Coastal Cleanup Day, and since all of our creeks actually run to the ocean, we count two. Actually inland coastal cleanup days have become very popular because the creeks carry things into the, into the ocean and so it's very important to keep our creeks clean. Also, music in the park is tomorrow. Snaps for Sinners will be playing a lively mix of swing music and other related genres. And that's at 6 o'clock until 7:30 at Rec Room. And that's all I have.
All right. Department of Recommendations, discussion possible adoption of resolution authorizing city manager to approve construction change orders up to a cumulative total of 25% of the total contract amount for the North Maple Street Improvement and Storm Drain Replacement Project.
Yeah.
Oh, and to authorize a contract amendment with Bootleer's Construction Incorporated to allow the change order required to perform the work.
Thank you. That's very long.
I know.
Did I say anything?
Hey, but you're excited about storm drains, so.
Suzanne Lutzis, the Assistant Engineer for the city. So you pretty much said it all. Basically, we're working on North Maple Street Storm Drain Project right now. And when Bootleer Construction went to excavate, we found a two-inch steel water line, which is the main water line down the street, which also has five water services off of it. And we thought that because we are going to pave the road as part of the regular North Maple Street project, then we should, well, before we pave it, switch out the water line to plastic C900, which is the standard pipe now. And increase the pipe size to four-inch, redo the service connections. And then also, we're talking about putting a warp head also, which is like a hydrant, but for a small water line at the end of the cul-de-sac for fire protection. And so to do the work, we need additional money. And so we're recommending that the city manager has the authority to sign up on change orders of an increase of 15%. We typically do a 10% change order authorization. It's already been done for the project. So this would just add the funds necessary from the water fund, which we have money for, from interdepartment transfer to redo the water line on the street before we pave it.
So it's, it's going another 15% over the 10%?
Yeah.
So it's not 25% over that, okay?
Right, it's cumulative.
And at the time we did our staff report, because this was uncovered and we wanted to, we want to get the work done quickly, so we rushed to get a staff report together, and we did not have a cost estimate. Although the contractor said he would do it for time and materials, which is good. Is there a cost estimate attached yet?
Not yet, but we're, we're expecting it to be somewhere around $35,000.
Okay, that's good.
The rough estimate.
So a question, you guys say you uncovered it, you knew the water line was there, but you didn't know that it was ancient, is that correct?
Yeah, we didn't, we just didn't need to know it because our storm drain was on the other side of the road. But when we started pulling up the ramp on the corner, that's when we found the water line. And that's when we found out what the material was.
Those old steel water lines are culprits for brown water.
They're culprits for leaking. We're going, I mean, the project up on Spruce and Pine right now, I mean, that's, that was motivated primarily from steel water line. I'm happy to report that we did have Daniel from before and Scott Mattson from our sewer department earlier were out on North Maple and they did camera the sewer lines since, since we were there. And thinking about water and we've done storm drain and we're paving it, that the sewer looks actually pretty good. It's not 100% perfect, but it's good enough that it doesn't need repair or replacement, so that's good news. But we would like to, we would like to change up the water before it becomes a problem. I would really be, I think a lot of people would be disappointed really if we paved the road and then we had to go in there and start digging it up and fixing water line. And that particular water line is even more icky because it runs underneath the gutter, which is concrete. And that's really expensive if you want to start messing around and digging up that and repairing that. So what we're thinking now is moving it to the other side. There's a, there's one empty space that it could go in to get the clearance from sewer and our new storm drain.
We would dig it up, right, and get rid of the old one and then put the new one in?
We would actually just abandon the old one. Yeah, just, that's typical. Otherwise, we really are getting into the curb and gutter and sidewalk. If we were out a little bit, we might just replace it. If we're not, we don't want the project to start creeping even more.
So I think this is a no-brainer to take this advantage, to take advantage of this opportunity to replace the water line. I also heard from two people who live on that street today and they very strongly support taking this opportunity to replace the water line now while the construction is happening. That being said, I'm very concerned that we approved a deficit budget and now we're considering adding to it. And so I would just hope that there's some kind of consideration into taking something else off the table that we had planned to spend in this budget year.
Well, this is from the water fund.
This is from the water fund. So which is different than the, so our deficit budget is general fund. We are not have a deficit budget for the water fund. So we're actually fine. We have money in our CIP account to do that and it will not affect our budget.
Yeah, yep, glad to say.
If this had been something else in the street, then it would be a.
If this was a general fund issue, we would be having a whole different conversation. But it happened to be a water line.
I spoke to several neighbors in the neighborhood and Tom and Shirley Shaw wanted me to go on record on their behalf to say that they support doing the water line correctly and not spending any more money. But he also wanted, the city council, it noted that they've been very impressed with Bootleer Construction and how expeditious they've been working. There's been no wasting of time and that they feel like our tax dollars are being well spent on the project over there. There's nobody standing around, the job's getting done well. And that they've been really good at accommodating the neighbors, so on their behalf, I want to throw that out there. And then I had an additional question. I noticed that as you go on to west Mendocino, that as you're going west, that there's more sidewalk taken out than there is on the east side. And I thought that the west side looked like the original map that I expected. As you come out of North Maple Street, going towards Brookside to the right, the cutout section there is, I don't know, roughly what, 12 feet or so? But then as you go to the east, there's only like maybe, what, it looks like maybe three feet? And I'm wondering, is, is that ADA sidewalk going to continue? Because in the original plans, I thought we were gonna get like this nice continuum on the corner. Now it's looking like we're gonna have this nice ADA turn to the right, but we're not gonna have it to the left moving east.
Yeah, um, okay, so what's the question? I think that it's, they are different. The reason they're different is just simply for gra, just because of the grades or the elevations that are out there. I don't think it's. I don't think it's changed too much in regard to, in regard to the original plan. But it is true that on the east side of West Mendocino, so by the apple trees and all of that, that it will be a nice ADA, you know, ramp, but then it's going to conform into a narrower sidewalk. Does that-
It looks like compared to the other side of the street-
narrower.
Very, very, very narrow.
It is very narrow.
I'm wondering why on the west side, we have like a 12.
Because it's-
And the other side's smaller.
Yeah, well, if we're talking about the width, the actual width of the side-
The length.
That's a great, that's just a great thing. That's a great thing. That's just what it takes to get, meet the requirements based on what's there.
All of that rock and, and tree matter that's on the left side, is, so that is city property where those trees are, or that, is that-
This is city right-of-way.
Right, it is city property. Do, did the city plant those trees?
I don't think so.
The city did not.
Some of that will have to go.
Because I just know that it impacts the traffic on the sidewalk. I've heard many complaints about people being able to get access through that space.
Yes. So-
I was told that someone planted those and they did so without permission.
Yeah, I do not think-
I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
Because I thought in the original, I'm only asking because I thought in the original plan that as you build that ADA corner, that it was going to extend out just a little ways. And I noticed that it is on the west, but it doesn't seem to be any longer.
Well, we're not done yet.
Okay.
But, so for the length, we're not done yet. So that could change a little bit out in the field. I know today, they were out there. I was just out there right before I came here and we were just getting final for the western ramp. So there will be field adjustments. I don't know exactly what those are going to be yet for the other side. In terms of the width and the vegetation though, some of that will have to be removed to be ADA compliant on our ramp. But again, it is true that like once we get off the ramp, it narrows back, the sidewalk narrows back down. So, there's that. I'm happy to report that I think the resident in that area and where multiple residents have, actually pretty much everyone on that street, the corners and the street have been very nice to work with. And I feel like they've been very understanding, which is very nice for us. So I'm happy about that right now. You know, the other, the other vegetation there, we have talked to residents about that. And I think, I think there's further discussion to be had there.
I think you answered my question.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to throw out that there was one day when I was talking to you out there and, and a neighbor brought up a concern about the fact that there is a faded side, faded crosswalk at that intersection. And then on Mendocino, we get heavy traffic going to the school. And there was a request that the city put up a slow school sign on that street. So I just, I told that individual that I would bring that up at council meeting so that maybe that could go on a future needs list of some sort.
Yep, and we'll, as part of the project, we'll do, we'll have new striping put in for the crosswalk. So that'll help that part at least.
All right. Have you had a questions, otherwise anybody from the public that would like to ask anything? Can I bring it back up here and see if I have a motion?
I would make the motion of recommended action.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second for the discussion. Let I call for the vote, to Lawrence.
Councilmember Connie Rodriguez?
I'll have to state again.
Strong?
Yes.
Now Stransby?
Yes.
And Mayor Consol?
Yes, all right. Thank you Suzanne. Council, City Council Committee Boards and Agency Reports.
Oh, before we move on, I just realized we, I wanted to ask if we needed any comment about these two letters that we received.
5G issue?
Yeah, I mean Stephanie and I talked about it very briefly, that it's really not something the city has any, any authority over.
It was just a correspondence to you. And, you know, if you wanted to bring a council item, you could try to do that.
It is basically, my understanding is this is something the city has absolutely no authority over.
It's not on our agenda, so we can't actually talk about it.
Okay.
All right. So anybody have-
Yes. So, I think I have it. No, it's, tomorrow, the EDFC, the Economic Development and Financing Corporation, is meeting in Ukiah. And that's, people are welcome to attend that. It's at 2 o'clock at the Community Foundation. And I think I reported already about what they did last meeting. There is, I don't believe there is a meeting of the Solid Waste Management Authority this month. But there are going to be some items coming up and I wanted to make sure that we could put those on an agenda. One of them has to do with a raise in the tipping fee for the, the waste matter that goes to the Solid Waste Management Authority. And it's a doll, going from $6 a ton to $7.50 a ton, which is needed to make the budget work. None of the haulers have a problem with it. It's going to amount to, for the average customer, well, we could go into detail when it gets on the agenda, but it amounts to 10 cents a month for the average residential customer just for this. There may be other things that come up when Solid Waste Management, or when our Solid Waste of Willets proposes their rates. But this is, needs to be part of that. And we, as a member of the Joint Powers Authority, need to approve that before it can become-
Before January.
Yeah, before January. So I'd like to make sure that that is okay to put on an agenda.
Yes, we'll, we'll be bringing that sometime before it goes into effect.
There's also a proposal that is in the works for amending the Joint Powers Agreement. And every jurisdiction that is a member of that agreement needs to approve any revision to those, basically the bylaws of the Solid Waste Management Authority. So when it gets sorted out exactly what those proposed revisions are, I'd like to make sure that can be on the agenda as well. So, okay. That's Solid Waste of Willets. The third agency that I am an alternate for, but I have not attended recently because the, the regular representative from Point Arena has been going, and that's Sonoma Clean Power. And at recent Sonoma Clean Power meetings, they have, one of the important things that has come up is that PG&E and therefore Sonoma Clean Power are talking about changing the rate structure primarily to a time of use structure. And it affects, you know, when people use power during high-peak hours, they pay more per kilowatt than they do in the off-peak hours. There was a presentation from PG&E to Sonoma Clean Power and it's been recommended by our representative from Point Arena that we hear that proposal and kind of get the details for the city, for the city council to know, but also for our residents to know. So that's an important-
I think the PUC has also been rolling that out too. Because I know I was at a League of Cities where someone from the PUC was speaking about that. So obviously it's on the state's agenda too.
Yes, I think, yeah, it is. In fact, I had a couple of other quick, hopefully quick things. So those are things that would come up to the city council itself.
Okay, and so per procedure, all I need is two people saying they want that, to hear that and, and I-
Join in with that just so that we have, I think it's important for the folks to get that information out there.
Okay, so other reports that Jonathan Torres from Point Arena wanted me to bring up. One of them is that Sonoma Clean Power is encouraging all of the municipal governments that are part of buying power from Sonoma Clean Power to use the Evergreen Service, which helps them localize their energy sources. And it costs a few cents more per kilowatt or whatever it is. It costs a little bit more. But I wanted to put that out to, not right now, to the city council members, but to the staff to look eventually at whether it makes any sense to do the Evergreen Service. It's a little bit more expensive, but it, it supports localizing our power sources. And the Advisory Committee to Sonoma Clean Power, it's a volunteer citizen committee, is looking for some new members. So if anybody in our community wants to get more conversant with Sonoma Clean Power, they want volunteers. And the, the other thing was that the CPUC, the Public Utilities Commission, has a forum on September 23rd regarding the quality and unreliability of telecommunications service. That forum is going to be in Monterrio, 6:00 PM on September 23rd. Again, if anyone's real interested in how our telecommunications grid is working and not working, that's an opportunity.
Supreme?
I had a representative from Metal Effects approach me and then I asked them to reach out to senior manager in MAGE about disposal of sawdust at Metal Effects and the inability of solid waste to pick it up and how it could impact their ability to conduct business. And if that, if they weren't able to, to dispose of that sawdust through solid waste, that that could potentially impact six, seven jobs. So I'm hoping that they reached out to the line of both of you.
No, is the issue that, that solid waste will won't take it or that they won't pick it up?
Is that, it's not a kind of waste that they're supposed to pick up?
Building materials in general, I think it would need especially, you sort of have to arrange privately.
They had been picking it up and now they're not picking it up. I'm going to reach, I'm going to reach out to them again.
Because I know Henry, so, so yeah.
We talked a few days ago and I said that MAGE was the rep and that would be the most appropriate person to come.
I don't know if that's a kind of waste that, that Ensoa feels.
That's just straight up trash pickup, so I can't be sure about that.
So I should direct and report to you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right. That was a follow-up for that.
Or actually, yeah, and I can talk to Jerry Ward and see what's going on.
Okay, thank you. And then MTA, so MTA, at our last meeting, we formed a committee to address possible transportation agreements with our local senior centers. It's really becoming a hot topic. And so this Friday at 1:30, we'll be, I'll be chairing a committee meeting in Fort Bragg for those individuals who would like to attend. I know Richard Baker from our local senior center will be attending. If there's anybody else that would like to attend, feel free to go to the City of Willis website. You can call me or email me and I can give you more information on the location. And if you're looking for a ride, I can probably help with that too.
David Pearson?
We had a Caltrans meeting, was it last Friday? And they were going over the Sherwood Intersection Project. Essentially, they're ahead of schedule. And they are looking to have a city walkthrough on October 4th. So the city will be going through the project, making sure everything is wrapped up for winter. The signal might even have been finished up tonight, would possibly turn on tomorrow. If not, then it won't happen until Monday or Tuesday of next week. They don't want to turn it on on a Friday and then have everybody leave for the weekend and we have a faulty signal. So possibly tomorrow, otherwise next week. And they did give us the costs for maintenance on that stretch of Main Street. And it looks that the city is going to need to start thinking about setting aside $180,000 a year in order to cover striping and repaving and assume the responsibility for that one, that stretch. So that was a little bit of a gulp, I think, for most people in the room. And that's all I've got.
$180,000 for future things or for annual maintenance?
It includes annual maintenance and then a complete repave. And they expect the paving that they provide to be about a 20-year life.
So it's, it's setting aside money for future paving, repaving and whatnot, but it's also the annual-
But also doing striping and maintenance ongoing for the next-
I think, yeah, I think the number, it was 140 just to set aside every year for the repaving. And then another 100 and change, $100,000. Yeah, $120,000 about just for annual cost, so.
And then additional for the repaving.
So it's like 260 a year, I think.
That's a big chunk.
What's the beginning and ending of that, well, the half stretch of the town?
Highway 20 to the northern limit of city limits.
City, that is, city.
And that, that kicks in as soon as it's relinquished to the city, which will happen after they've buttoned down the Sherwood Road Intersection.
Kind of a funny little comment made by one of the Caltrans people was, oh, well, I'm sure you all thought of that and planned for that amount of money. So hopefully the public will understand when we have to tighten our belts to pay for upkeep of Main Street.
Larry?
The MCOG does not work on, or have a meeting on this month. And I might want to go to just the plus thing. Spruce and Pine Street construction for the water has been just very nice. The people have done a nice job and we got it turned on today. And I can't believe the pressure. Really nice.
That it?
It's it for me.
Just real quick, two things. MAGE was with me and we had a finance committee meeting where June talked about refinancing some bonds. And maybe quickly, we had a sewer and water. And the issue was, and maybe you could elaborate one, we, I think the numbers were a little wrong. June had sent us the numbers that were presented. Apparently the bond folks had done this little spreadsheet thing and when we, MAGE was looking at it, the numbers didn't jive and it looked like they put some bad numbers and they corrected it. That was on the water?
That's a sewer, that's our wastewater bond.
That's a wastewater bond.
We have actually four bonds. The rates aren't terrible, but there, there are two, two of the bonds we have are a little over 4%. And Bond Council thought we could do better on that and so recommended that we do go forward because it's actually a pretty long-term bond. And by doing so, we could, recognizing some significant savings in our bond payments. But we didn't have the exact number, so we didn't go forward on that. The second bond refinancing was regarding our redevelopment agency money, our successor agency bond. And that one, that one looked great. And it would actually, because of the refinancing and we're giving redevelopment money, which isn't general fund money, but because of the reduction in rate, it would actually result, if we got the rate we were targeting, which was 2.5%, could result in an increase of $25,000 a year to the general fund, which would have to go to the general fund. So I believe the finance committee recommended that that be recommended by the finance committee that we prepare a report for you to, to do that.
And June just distributed the updated, I think, do we, I think we have to meet again because she sent it to, to us. But the idea was of saving money on the water and sewer bonds that they were-
She was going to, she did not get the updated rates. And she had to, she's actually working from home this week because she's got some family issues.
She sent a-
That was, I think, on the sewer-
Oh, sewer, okay, it's the water, it's associated with.
The water, the water, our, our water bond is actually like 0%.
Yeah, the water bond.
It's an incredible rate that we're just incredibly fortunate to have that rate.
And the other thing we discussed is, obviously, we briefed on this, uh, Main Street sort of thing, like, throw something else into the fire that we need to budget for. And, uh, so, we discussed revenue generation, and we asked that Stephanie bring forward a sales tax, uh, measure to the whole council for review.
Resolution.
Yeah. So, that was part of our recommendation. Costs are going up, we, uh, and it's not just salaries, it's everything, insurance and apparently roads to boot, which apparently, we've been asking that question, which I find really insulting by Caltrans, that those questions were asked even before I was on the council. Council members up here kept saying, okay, how much do we need to plan for, what's the deal? You know, it, I, I think if I had been at that meeting, I would have probably yelled at them, because.
Me, too.
It, uh, it, it was brought up so many times, like I said, prior councils, we said, we just need to know. What's the hit, what's up, et cetera. And we, I brought it up when I was on the Caltrans committee meeting, you know, hey, what are we looking at? Well, we don't know yet, we're going to do, okay, but we need to know. I, I honestly was concerned about the signals and that sort of thing, because we don't have anybody in-house, so we would have to, and they become ours, to make sure. And I figured paving, yes, it would be 20 years, but the ongoing maintenance, those sort of things, and, and the liability issues that are associated with that road being ours versus not. I mean, we've had issues on the south end when liability issues came up, but because it was Caltrans, and the city skated on them, but once it's your road, it's, the liability goes with it, too, so.
Yeah, would you, so, are, are, once relinquishment happens, are insurances likely to go up again?
Then the only other thing I have is LAVCO, we discussed, they did a presentation on tax-sharing agreements, and I forwarded that information to Stephanie, that it, it's been confusing, because when folks either want to do detachments, they want to get away from an agency, or, or if an agency wants to expand services, it's come up with the fire departments, then the rules say they have to go and, and explore whether there's going to be a tax-sharing agreement. In some cases, it's just going to be an agreement that says that there is no tax sharing. In other cases, it, it may involve like an annexation or something, that, what sort of agreement? LAVCO doesn't have the power to order a tax share, and it's just kind of on the check of the box. But the information had been asked for, like, what exactly, where, what are other places doing? And it kind of was an eye-opener as to what some folks give up, and, obviously, it's political. In some areas where they really want to annex an area for other reasons, they, they kind of give up the farm. In other areas, it's, um, it, there's no rhyme or reason when I looked at the list. And I'm sure if Stephanie wants to send that out to you guys, you'd be very interested in it, because I think as annexations become something that all the municipalities in this area start to look at, you'll get an eye-opener.
And apparently, there has not been an annexation in our county for something like 20 years. And we don't even have information from the county assessor what our current tax share is in the city limits. We don't know. They don't seem to have this information available, which is just shocking to me. That, so, we don't know what, what our actual share is, and, and they don't provide us any numbers. So, and this is not just Willits, it's all of the cities.
But we have folks that want city services that are outside in the county, that want to become part of us, and we have, I guess, a desire to provide areas for housing, and so, I, I think it'll also affect us here in the near future as we explore annexation issues, so, that's all I have.
So, a couple of other things that came up at the, at the finance committee was that, um, we are hoping to have some new proposals for development fees sometime in like October, maybe? That's coming right up, unfortunately, so I don't know, that, that was mentioned.
For permit fees.
Building permit.
Building permit fees, and, and June is also working on a, our yearly revision to the master fee schedule.
Okay.
And apparently, we need to have discussion on possible impact fees going down the road. And Stephanie brought up that the fire department hired a consultant.
Yeah, so, the fire department is doing impact fees, and they hired a consultant to do that, and they gave me the name and also their impact fee report, so we could, because I, I did get a quote from one company that does impact fees. But this company, this person the fire department used has already been in our area, which is, so maybe we can get a better deal. Dusty has that, and we need to follow up with that. But I think a contract with the company, and we put together some impact fees, because there are legal requirements, and it's really complicated, and we, we just can't do it in-house. So, we'll be probably bringing you something like that.
Yeah, is the development of development, or impact fees, is the, is there an item in our budget to hire somebody to help us do that?
Um, without June here, I could not tell you. I thought I put something in there for that.
Okay.
But I, I.
Well, in any case, it would come to the city council for review, but I think it's a really important thing. And then June also said that they're trying to gradually go through the boxes of records to look at landfill costs and propose to get reimbursements from the county.
Yes.
For their share. But it's going to take a while.
It's going to take a while, so, um, this landfill was closed, I believe, in 1990. At that time, in June, the year, probably, you, you, we've had a lot of, we've been doing a lot of work on that in the last few weeks, um, just because we're so, I had this talk with Tom Langelo, who has the, you know, Mendocino County, and, and, you know, we have, they have not paid their, their share of cleanup since 1990. And right now, we've spent over $3 million on cleanup, and it's a, it's supposed to be shared 50/50. And, and actually, a lot of that was our fault, because we did not build them, because we were so short-stacked, we just went ahead and did it, and no one bothered, no one had the, I'm not sure why it happened, but it didn't happen. So, the, the county is, is working with us into at least paying for half the cost this year. And then, we're slowly going backwards and reconciling what they will owe us in, for previous years. And it's, it's very challenging. We have, what we also talked about in finance committees, we have a very antiquated ERP system, and that's our financial system, so we can't just pull it up from our records. These are going to have to be looked for in boxes in storage, um, for years and years to get records. And, and that is going to be quite a challenge, but we, we need to do it. I mean, this is, this is a lot of money that, that we are owed.
Yeah, and it was also pointed out that, um, there would be ongoing savings to us in staff cost alone if we were to.
Data.
To improve our financial tracking systems, because right now, many, many things have to be done by hand and painstakingly, and also extremely difficult to, to get the records from them from prior years. And, and a lot of this could be really streamlined if we had a proper program that's.
So, I, I think even though we, we, as the finance committee, don't make the decision to, to make it so, that we would like that discussion to come back to the whole council, because it may very well be a discussion of, and again, it's probably going to be, obviously, some parts of it would obviously be general fund, and it would be one of those, we're going to spend money to save money kind of arguments, but that has to be decided by all of us, so. All right. Council member reports and recommendations, did we already beat that one, too? Good Welfare?
Happy birthday, Dusty, on Sunday.
I think it would, I mean, today's the obvious day, and I know that many people attended the ceremony this morning, but I think it would be very appropriate for the council to observe a minute of silence, so that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that we can honor those that.
I think I meant to do that earlier, and I.
Yeah, didn't want to go without. I know it's been weighing on the hearts and minds of all of us.
And I read a proclamation today, um, on behalf of the whole city council, recognizing, uh, the 9/11 Day of Remembrance, so, so let's go ahead and take a quick moment of silence. Okay.
Good Welfare, too?
Go ahead.
Couple of things, one is that, um, the latest Will newsletter is available, if any of you would like to have a copy of it. I'll just leave them here. And, um, in it, among other things, there's, um, September 20th is the International Climate Strike that is being organized internationally. And, um, the, the closest demonstration for us is in Ukiah. There's going to be one at noon at the courthouse, and one at 4:00 PM at Alex Thomas Plaza on Friday, um, September 20th. And on September 21st, it's International Peace Day, and Emendal Corral is going to sing at the Brick House at 10:00 in the morning. And then, after we do that, we're going to carpool down to the Ukiah Peace Day at, um, the farmer's market at Alex Thomas Plaza, approximately 11:00 o'clock. So, people are welcome to, to join any of those that they would like to. We also, in here, we have the Concerts in the Park, which I think is a wonderful, uh, community service that the city provides, and there's all sorts of other stuff in here. We try to cover the gamut.
Real quick, Stephanie, while you have us all here, have we locked in the October?
28th.
20th day.
Yes, we are locked in for October 28th.
Okay.
And then it's.
Signed our commitment with our consultants. We're looking at sort of a middle-of-the-day thing, so we'll have like, from 10:00 o'clock in the morning, we'll do two hours, and then break for lunch, and kind of rest and relax, and then another two hours.
Okay.
And I almost forgot, for Good Welfare, happy belated birthday to you, which was yesterday, right?
Oh, yeah.
I had a wonderful day off, I went hiking with my dogs, it was awesome.
Unless there's any other Good Welfare, we do have one item of closed session conference with Legal. Council Pursuit Government Code 54956.9B, anticipated litigation, three matters. If we have anything to report out, we'll report out.